Good evening and welcome to the Tempe City Council Special Meeting for January 11th, 2018. We're going to do, for those that are able, could you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. The first item on our agenda is a call to the audience. Audience members have up to three minutes to address items listed on this agenda. You do have a three-minute time limit to address this. I do have some cards. I'm going to read the cards I do have. First person is Athena Solomon.
Athena Solomon, resident of Tempe and also state representative for Legislative District 26. The only item on today's special meeting is improperly before you. According to the Arizona State Statute 9-500.11D, before entering into a retail tax development incentive agreement, the city must first make the following findings. Number one, the proposed tax incentive is anticipated to raise more revenue than the amount of the incentive within the duration of the agreement. Number two, that in the absence of a tax incentive, the retail business facility or similar retail business facility would not locate in the city or town in the same time, place, or manner. The statute goes on to say that these findings, quote, "shall be verified by an independent third party before the city or town enters in a retail development incentive agreement," end quote. As of right now, the third-party verification of the findings have not been made available to the public. Without seeing the basis for such verification, the proposed retail development tax incentive before you tonight does not meet the requirements of Arizona's rules, open meetings. As State Statute ARS Title 38-431.09, Section A states, quote, "It is the public policy of the state that meetings of the public bodies be conducted openly and that notices and agendas be provided for such meetings which contain such information as is reasonably necessary to inform the public of the matters to be discussed or decided." How is the public to know on what basis a third party has verified the council's finding that the project will raise more revenue than the massive tax subsidy being given to it? How is the public to know on what basis a third party verified that this facility would not locate here without the tax incentive? The public does not even know who the third party is or what the relationship with the developer is. Without the third-party verification documents publicly available, today's agenda item is improperly before you. The item should be renoticed and the documents verifying an independent third-party assessment should be made available to the public, Mayor Mitchell and members of the council. I thank you for your time and I would like to submit this for the record as well.
Next is Denise Johnson.
Do I have to say my address?
If you say Tessie, that's fine.
Okay, I'm Denise. I'm Denise Johnson. I live in 1,000 South Farmarav. Council members, Kubi and Keating, I like you guys a lot, but I do think that you should recuse yourself from this vote because you both work for ASU and they're a major stakeholder in this project. On the topic of ethics, the city is currently being investigated by the Attorney General for improper use of giblets. It would be prudent of the city to stop approving giblets and other significant tax breaks like this one, at least until these investigations have concluded. The financial impact statement for this project has been sealed. Tempe citizens deserve transparency. You owe us that as our elected officials. What will Omni provide Tempe for this generous rebate? A number of low-skilled, low-wage jobs and a place for people to spend money. Every retail outlet at Tempe Marketplace could say the same. Walmart could say the same. CVS could say the same. If Omni doesn't have to pay sales tax for the next 10 years, why not these businesses? If TRT Holdings, Omni's parent company, who generated over $1 billion in revenue last year, doesn't have to pay sales taxes for 10 years, why should any Tempe businesses have to? Lastly, I'm not against tax breaks for businesses who truly make the city a better place to live. Some examples I would personally be okay with are: a tech shop partnering with a manufacturing company who in return would offer X number of free classes per year and reduce-cost memberships for Tempe citizens; a medical facility offering subsidized care to Tempe's low-income and children's populations; or a retail space that offers 24/7 access to public bathrooms, showers, and a place to get out of the heat or cold. Projects that truly invest in our city are what Tempe citizens deserve and is what Tempe's legacy deserves. This project falls far short of this and, as such, is not deserving of $21 million worth of tax rebates. Tempe deserves better than what this project proposes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have a card for Kevin Brown.
Hi. I don't really have anything to add to what was already said, except I'd really like to see people come here because they want to be in Tempe and not because they need tax breaks. And I just think that we have more to offer. And I realize that, you know, ASU, I don't have to go through all the stuff that we're going to get. I get that and that it's ASU property, but I still think that it's, would be a better deal for the city if we didn't do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the cards I have. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing? I don't. Oh, Philly Yates, sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and everybody on the council. I'm Phil Philly Yates and I represent the Riverside Neighborhood Association. And everybody keeps calling me and emailing me and asking me, "Why are we going to be giving all of these tax incentives, these tax breaks to ASU? What does the city have to gain by these incentives?" I don't understand. I don't really have an answer for that. And I'd like to know, and I'm sure that everybody else would like to know, why are we doing this? We don't even have a place for a bus to stop on the corner of Mill Avenue and University. And that should definitely be something that is included in any kind of a plan for the area. And that's pretty much all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ann Gill.
Ann Gill, President and CEO of the Tempe Chamber. Mayor and council members, on behalf of our 650 members who employ nearly 70,000 individuals, I'm here to express support for the Omni Hotel and Conference Center scheduled for your consideration tonight. Since its inception back in 2000s, the Tempe Chamber has supported a conference center to meet the growing needs of Arizona State University and the Tempe business community. This project is a culmination of consultant studies and community planning that will benefit Tempeans for years to come. For years, a property at Mill and University has been considered for development. This timely project will take what is essentially vacant land and create revenue-generating hotel rooms, conference space, sales tax, revenue, and jobs. The time to approve this project is now while market conditions make large-scale development projects like this viable. Thank you for consideration of our support for this important project, and we hope that you will approve the project to grow the number of jobs in downtown Tempe. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address us? Could you please get my attention? Please come forward. State your name and place of residence for the record.
My name is Cindy Burkhart and I'm a Tempe resident. And I am not against development. I'm against building or anything like that, but when I read the facts about this case and why we would give away, according to this, 30 years of rebates, I don't really understand it. For the first 10 years, we're giving away 100%, and then for the next 20 years, we're giving away 90%. Now, is, the way I understand negotiations, when one of the partners has what they need, they're in a better position. This Omni Hotel, they've been trying to move forward since 2015. So, you know, the same partner, Jerry Colangelo, who was in USA Basketball, he was working with Omni back in 2015. It didn't happen because the city of Tempe didn't come through. Now, the city of Tempe is giving these things away, and you have to question why this is happening now. It just makes no sense. And the other part of this is, you know, is this deal, how is it going to help the residents, the police, the social services, when we give this away for 30 years? That just doesn't seem like a good solution, and I would urge all of you to rethink this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please come forward. State your name and place of residence for the record. Oh, all right.
Good evening, Mayor Mitchell, members of the council. My name is Brian McCarty. I am the President and CEO of the Tempe Tourism Office, and as the organization's charge with promoting tourism for Tempe, I wanted to share some comments and thoughts. As you know, the economic impact from visitors is a great benefit to our community. Statistics that we have from 2015 show that Tempe welcomed 3.7 million visitors to the city. Those visitors spent over $730 million in direct spending in our community. Also, those visitors contributed more than $70 million in local and state taxes, which helps the overall burden of the local taxpayers through those visitors' contribution to that cause. Important to note is that the tourism industry also sustains 1 in 13 jobs in Tempe. So, the opportunity to enhance the visitor industry, and that is a positive for Tempe. While I have not reviewed the financial details of the project, I'm doing my job and haven't followed the details quite yet of all the due diligence and work that's been done, I, in the addition of another full-service hotel with a well-respected brand like Omni, would be a significant addition to our current mix of hotels here in Tempe. As well, the size of the proposed ballroom and meeting space is essential in an effort for us to be competitive. This additional space will help in efforts to attract new business to our community and allow larger groups in conferences to select Tempe, those that we miss today. And for local entities such as ASU, it also provides the ability to host their major functions in Tempe as well. So, thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address us on this item? Could you please get my attention? If none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. So, the item that is before us is a resolution to adopt, may to execute a convention and conference center development agreement with Omni Tempe LLC, a Delaware limited liability company. And this item requires an affirmative vote of at least 2/3 of the city council. Therefore, a council vote will need to have 5 of 7 is required for approval. Are there any comments or discussion from the council? Yes, Councilman Keating.
I'd just like to ask the city attorney as her opinion as far as recusal goes from Councilwoman Kubi and myself. Both of us are employed with ASU. Are we under any sort of obligation to recuse ourselves from this vote?
Mayor, members of the council. Apologize, I'm getting over cold. I don't believe that under state law, there is any requirement for recusal in this particular instance. I would be happy to give you additional information if we were to talk about this in a confidential setting.
Thank you.
Councilman Kubi.
Because it's my understanding that recusal comes when someone voting might benefit financially directly from that decision. And if you're an employee of a place, you have a set salary, you don't get additional benefits or bonus funds for approving or not approving a deal, a development deal. Is that right?
Councilmember, Councilmember Kubi, it is also my understanding that this decision that is before you, like other decisions in the past, would not directly affect any financial compensation to either of you, but that is facts that you all have and are privy to.
Okay. Councilman Spire.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to address an issue that is somewhat tangential to this item, but has been raised as a concern in other forums outside of this meeting and in this meeting as well, relating to the city of Tempe being, quote, "under investigation." And I just want to make sure people understand what that means and what that's all about. So, if you're not aware, there was a bill passed in the legislature called SB 1487, which made it so that any member of the legislature can force a municipality under investigation for any perceived violation of any provision of state law. This was a tool designed by a conservative legislature in a state that has some progressive cities like ours, so that literally any member of the legislature could force us to face scrutiny from the Attorney General, even if there was no probable cause, no reasonable suspicion of any actual violation of state law. In this case, where Tempe is now, quote, "under investigation," a legislator from a suburb north of Tucson decided to target the city of Tempe. A Republican legislator targeted a progressive city that happens to be attracting some great opportunities, and specifically in the projects that are challenged. One of them, for example, is the Bank of the West Project, which has a ton of high-wage, high-skill jobs. Now, that legislator did not meet with city officials, did not meet with members of the council, as far as I know, did not meet with the mayor to discuss his concerns. He, just because he now has this power, under this draconian power under SB 1487, he unilaterally forced us into this investigation without really any of the facts or any consultation with the city or city officials. This is, first of all, a ridiculous law, SB 1487, that's being used as a sword by a legislature that doesn't like the kinds of progressive things that the city of Tempe is doing. The threat of 1487 has come to Tempe in various forms for various policy initiatives that we've been working on, and this is just another step in a long line of a conservative legislature challenging a progressive city. I am disappointed that there are members of our community who I know are opposed to SB 1487 and the idea behind it, who are using this investigation as a tool to oppose this project. If you oppose the project, oppose it. Come tell us the reasons why. Explain those reasons to us. But to seize upon this really nasty tool that the legislature has created as an argument for why the city of Tempe should not be pursuing this project, I think is an ill-informed, and I hope it's ill-informed, because if it's not ill-informed, that means you are informed and you still decided to use it. So, I think it's a mean-spirited use of a pretty ridiculous tactic regarding a terrible piece of legislation. So, I just want to make sure that when people hear that Tempe is under investigation, they understand that there was no reasonable suspicion, there was no probable cause, and there was no consultation with the city to find out what the facts are, which I believe, frankly, the person has the facts wrong, and if he had consulted with us, would have learned that, in order to put us under investigation. So, I just wanted to clarify that matter.
Thank you. And I want to thank everyone for coming. I want to thank all the individuals who have emailed me and have responded, and I spoke to many individuals on the phone. This is, this project, as I said, has been in work for many, many years. And one of the things I can honestly tell you, and Brian alluded to it earlier when he came up, our new CEO of the Convention and Visitors Bureau of Tempe, you know, tourism is technically reported as the second-leading industry in the state of Arizona, second to technology. And with that being said, this project alone offers over 30,000 square-footed meeting space. What's more importantly, because I've read some stuff on social media and online and through emails, there is a lot of misinformation out there, but I would tell you that we don't have a ballroom in Tempe that can house any particular set of conference, over 1,000 people. The largest we have is a space at the Buttes, the West Courtney Buttes, that can sit up to about 720 people. This is a game changer for the tourism industry, and to be able to host certain types of conferences, which not only help the vibrancy, the economic vitality of our community, but it also helps sustain Mill Avenue and the tourism, and members of the Chamber of Commerce, the Convention and Visitors Bureau for generations to come. And this is something that Tempe prides itself on, on tourism and events, bringing other people into this community. It really is truly an asset for our community. And one of the other benefits I really want to point out, this is 30,000 square foot. The main ballroom is over 15,000, about 15,000 square feet. The indirect economic impact on an annual basis is over $32 million. The total project has an actual economic impact of $136 million. What we've created, and I want to keep in mind, this parcel has been mostly vacant since 2000. And that's something that we, this is, I think, the third or fourth project, someone mentioned earlier, a project regarding USA Basketball that came forward, it didn't move forward, I think Cindy mentioned that. And I got to be honest with you, this is a third or fourth project. This project is not, the land that is, we're looking, that we're considering partnering with Arizona State, this is university, it's actually the state of Arizona Border Regions owned. And right, they can build anything, they, meaning Arizona State, can build anything they want on this piece of land. What's interesting is that we have an opportunity to partner with Arizona State and a private entity to create revenue stream that's going to benefit the city. And I already gave you some of the economic impact numbers that will happen as we move forward, if we move forward. And one of the things I would tell you is, the numbers are real. We do have a third-party study. It's listed in the resolution in our agenda, and we can, and I know we've given that information out to individuals and the media. They have that information, be more happy. It's a public document. It is listed on our website, that you can have the information on the study of the economic impacts. But this is really a game changer. Right now, we are not receiving any economic benefit from this piece of land. From day one, this project will contribute 100% of all the sales tax. It will contribute 100% to all the arts tax. Not only that, you know, I know Phil mentioned about the bus stop, they will be part in contributing to the streetcar, which is an assessment district, that will be contributing to helping the operation of the future streetcar in downtown Tempe. On top of that, this project from day one, the state of Arizona will collect 100% of all the transaction privilege tax. And what's important to note about the state of Arizona and the county, by the way, is that they're going to be collecting all the transaction privilege tax, which is actually going to go into the state general fund, which will help fund, you know, public education, DPS, child protective services, healthcare for those that are in need that's state-funded. This is exactly the type of project that we're looking at, as we're looking at building towards the future. This is at the bookend of Mill Avenue, and it would really be a tremendous asset for the businesses, the local small businesses in our community. Not to mention, it's going to provide over 300 jobs, whether it be including construction, jobs for the hotel industry, that is going to happen. And to be honest with you, and someone made a comment earlier, I think they are good jobs. I used to work in the hotel industry in my early days. I was a catering server, if you will. I understand the impact that that has on our community, and this is something that I think that is really going to be beneficial for our entire community. We do have support from the Tempe Chamber of Commerce, the Convention Bureau, the police and fire department of our community, because right now, as I mentioned, we are getting zero tax dollars from this property. And we have a history of having good projects in our community. Arizona Mills Mall, we were able to pay that off sooner or later, and we collect 100%. The West Courtney Buttes Hotel that I mentioned earlier, that's another project where we get the benefit of collecting 100% of the taxes, and this is something that happened many, many years ago that we're going to be, that we're benefiting today. Tempe Marketplace is another example of how we're working with a partnership in making sure that we're creating jobs for our community, revenue streams that add to the quality of life that our residents expect and enjoy in our community. A lot of stuff that we talked about earlier, for those that weren't here, we had a great conversation about our community needs assessments regards human services. On average, the city of Tempe provides over 30, or closer to 34% more than the next city per individual when it comes to human services needs. We couldn't do that if we didn't have the resources to be able to help the quality of life amenities that our residents expect and enjoy. So, and then we just talked about the streetscaping on Fifth Street right in front of here. Again, this is part of the transit tax that I mentioned earlier, that this project will be benefiting from day one, the transit tax that this project will be contributing to the benefit of our region, because this is a regional economy, and because we have light rail and we're part of Valley Metro, this is just going to continue to add to the overall vibrancy of our community. I do think this is a good project, and I understand that individuals have questions, and I welcome the conversation, to sit down, anyone that would like to, to have a conversation on this, because in the long term, with the history that we have as a city, being transparent, open, and communicating with our public, showing the benefits that it has, knowing the record that we have with the projects I mentioned earlier, that are success stories, because we're looking at the long term. Every single person that I know that has ever served on a council, especially this current council, we are looking out for the best interests of our community, and this is exactly what this project brings for our community. And is there any other comments or discussion from the council?
I don't know, he said a lot.
Mayor Armando Savage. Thank you, though.
That's good. I think the mayor said quite a lot and a lot of really good things, and, you know, I don't want to belabor the issue, but what I do want to say is, you know, I take my responsibility of a council member very seriously, and I know my council colleagues do too, and I appreciate all the input that we received, whether it was positive, whether it was negative. I think it's really important that we take that into consideration whenever we make any decisions. But I will tell you, being, you know, a fourth-generation Tempean and being here for so long, you know, Tempe is always, always at the top of my list to make sure that what we're doing and the decisions that we make is the best thing for Tempe and for Tempe residents today and for those in the future. And when it comes to doing incentives, I don't think any of us take that lightly. And the return on investment really has to be there, and the product that you're going to receive has to be one of grand value, not only for the downtown area, but for the entire Tempe community. And what I see is an iconic conference and hotel center that is just going to complement what we already have. We have such an incredible special events team here in the city of Tempe. The Tempe Tourism Office does a fantastic job, bringing really incredible events. I think we have an event coming up this weekend, the Rock and Roll Marathon. And I think what this is going to do is just enhance some of those things that we're able to provide here in the city of Tempe, and more people are going to want to come be here to be a part of the experience, to be a part of this culture. And what does that create? That creates those individuals spending money in our stores and our restaurants and being part of our vibrant Tempe community. So, yes, I definitely support this project. I am very grateful for the Omni for wanting to be here and to be a part of it, and for Arizona State University for the diligent work, the patience that we've been through over the last few years to be able to get to this point, because really, if we don't take action now, today, we may be having this conversation 10 years from now, and then we're going to be back where the mayor says, where, you know, we've got this great piece of land right in the center of downtown Tempe that isn't activated and doing anything for us. So, you know, let's make some, let's make the choice to be able to bring something that is, I believe, of value to the city of Tempe and will definitely complement Tempe today and in the future. So, I'm very happy to be supporting it, and I would go ahead and like to make a motion, Mayor, to approve item two. Well, we can, we can.
There's been a motion. One thing I want to mention, I just want to clarify, this project is performance-based, which means the revenues generated out of this project are going back into the project. We're not writing a check, it's not coming, taxpayers are not footing the bill for this. So, what's important to note, that this is a project that, right now, we're not collecting any sales tax dollars on this project. And when we move, if we do move forward with this, the state will be collecting the sales tax, which will help the state fund, and we want to partner with the state, because we think they're a great partner for us. We also want to make sure that they're contributing to the transit tax from day one and the arts tax. And also, the economic impact on an annual basis, the indirect economic impact on an annual basis, is $32 million. Our public safety organizations in our community are supportive of this project, for the fire and police. I've been asked that question, too. How is this going to impact? We've done the studies, we've spoken to them, they understand the importance of what this could bring and the economic impact. The actual economic impact over the life of the project, as I mentioned, is over $136 million. And this is something that we're collecting $0 on now. So, what better way to partner with our good partners with Arizona State University and with the Omni, to get a good partnership that will help generate revenues, that will contribute to our state's economy in terms of revenues, but also contribute to our local economy and help the local businesses indirectly and as well as directly as we move forward. Councilmember Kubi. Councilmember Kubey.
I've spoken very eloquently about the proposed conference center. I have just a few more things to say, because there have been a lot of misrepresentations, and sadly, we live in a post-fact world. But I want to also emphasize, you know, the land is owned by ASU and does not currently generate any tax revenue. And it's probably a good bet to say if the Omni were not built, that it would easily become a dorm, student housing, and we would, that would continue to provide no revenue. And so that would be, I think, not a good thing for our economy and for our city. And as you mentioned, the Omni will continue paying all the local arts and transit taxes, as well as state taxes. So that's been a misrepresentation, that they're not paying any taxes. And there will be no decrease in education tax revenue. That's just not, simply not true. And also, I want to make a point, they're obligated to give us $400,000 a year to promote tourism in Tempe over the entire life of the deal. So that's 400,000 for 60 years. As a former tourism professional in Massachusetts, the spirit of Massachusetts is the spirit of America, just want to add that. So when you think about tourism dollars, they're known to have a multiplier effect, conservatively, a nine-to-one effect. So for every dollar you spend on tourism promotion, you bring in $9. I mean, that's the old, old school. It's actually, I think, even higher now, but I want to be conservative in that projection. So that, you know, is at 3.6 million a year. That's very impressive. And we want to be competitive for these larger conferences to host the League of Cities meetings. They would bring such dynamic impact to the city. But there's another point that I want to talk about, because with all this, with all these community benefits, I struggled with this decision for a long time, as many of my friends out in the audience know. I struggled with this decision. And from the very, very beginning of talking about this, and we negotiate this, and, you know, over, you know, many, many moons, I wanted to see that we would build this project in accordance with our values and in a way that would help to build our workforce economy and help to build the trades and help to allow our young people to have a trade, to have a profession where they could live and work and help the building of Tempe over the next 10, 20, 30, 40 years. So I was very clear and consistent that I was a no vote unless I saw that there could be an agreement where we would welcome apprenticeship programs, where we welcome those programs that are approved by the state of Arizona, mind you, but that graduate journeyman three of the last five years. It was very important to me that this, the building, the actual building, and we're going to be creating 300 jobs in the construction trades, that we see workers that were treated well, that were part of apprenticeship programs. And so it was a long, a long-discussed factor in the decision, and in the past month, we were able to achieve an agreement there, and I'm delighted that that's the case, because I think will really stand out as a city. Our values are going to be reflected in the way we build this conference center. So for that reason and many more, I am voting yes tonight.
Mayor? Councilmember Keating?
Mayor, I'd just like to second the Vice Mayor's motion.
Any other comments? All right, this has been a motion by Vice Mayor O'Donnell Savage, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. That motion carries six to one. All right. There is no other items for this special meeting. With that, we will adjourn the special meeting. We're going to continue, we have a five-minute turnaround, and we'll continue with the issue review session and our committee of the whole, thank you.